Are you all ready?
Yes.
Ready? I call this October 21st meeting of the Pardica planning and zoning commission to order and ask that you stand with us as we say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summer, call the roll please.
Mr. Benbury?
Here.
Mr. Bradford?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Chair Cassius?
Here. Mr. White, I believe you have the minutes motion.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the September 5, 2019, meeting be waived and the minutes of said meeting as prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Second by Bradford. Are there any changes, corrections, comments? Call the roll please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Cassius? Aye. We have one item of all business which will continue to our next meeting. Our first new item of business, Mr. Morrison, would you read that please?
Yes ma'am. I move that this commission receive and file the application of the urban renewal and community development agency for the proposed revocation of plat M1072. I further move that the requested revocation be given and the previous lots restored as shown thereon. Because we have not received the file, urban and renewal has not yet met, I make a motion to table this. First, we need to...
We need to get, let's get a second first.
Second.
Second by Benbury, I'm sorry. And so we have a motion, it's seconded. Now, we need a motion to table.
Okay. I make a motion to table this item. Second.
Second by Benbury. Are there any comments? We just haven't received the file yet and so it's inappropriate for us to vote on it tonight. Any comments? Call the roll please.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benbury?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Chair Cassius?
Aye. That particular plat will be carried over to our next meeting, which will be the first Monday in November. Mr. Benbury, you have the next item of business, please.
Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Colgan Properties, LLC for approval of a similar principal permitted use to allow a financial institution to be located at 104, 106, and 107 Colonial Court. I further move this commission find a financial institution as a similar principal permitted use in the R4 zone and similar to a professional office.
Second.
Second by Morrison. Thank you.
The key to this petition is landscaping around the drive-through. Staff had a pretty easy time making the connection and the nexus between a professional office and the ongoings of a bank. You have clients that come in, they stay for a period of time and they leave. We have been working with Mr. Goins, the local professional representative, and also the architect in Ohio, to come up with a landscape plan that is acceptable. And they are here tonight and they have some revised drawings for you all as well and can answer any further questions that you have.
Right.
All right.
Do you have copies of the landscape plan? Or I've got some that I can hand out if that would be helpful to anybody.
Love to have a look at them.
Okay.
Certainly would.
Got some there too. No, this is perfect.
Thank you.
A couple of things that would happen while you review that, that if it is approved tonight, the next thing that would happen is Colonial Court will be shortened via a right-of-way closure that would go to the city commission and transfer that portion of the right-of-way to Colgan Properties and then a waiver plat would follow to clean all the interior property lines up to create the one tract.
I'm guessing that the primary exit for the drive-through would be on Pecan Court. Is that correct?
That is an option. The main ingress egress is the Colonial Court cul-de-sac. They do have that option to bleed out into Pecan Court as a relief point, but feel like the majority of the usage is still going to be off Colonial Court.
Josh, I need your help walking through this. Currently, this property is zoned R4.
Yes, sir.
Which, this type of facility is not a stated as a, specifically stated to be permissible in the R4 designation.
Right.
It would be permissible in a B1, which there is language for the R4 to marry up to the B1 in certain circumstances. However, for a drive-through facility requires a conditional use permit in the B1 zone. But are we short-circuiting that type of requirement here?
I wouldn't think so, and here's staff's reasoning behind that. That the majority of the actual land use, the bank itself, is what you would typically find in a professional office, which is principally permitted in the R4 zone. When working with petitioners on the drive-through aspect of it, we wanted to make sure that there was landscaping in place to protect the neighborhood to the west, which they've done that by hiding it behind the building and installing a landscape berm, landscaping on top. That is the main traffic generator that we see happening and since it's going to be mitigated, staff felt that it could move forward. As far as your question, Mr. Wade, as far as drive-throughs in the B1, they are allowed principally. For example, the McDonald's on Jackson Street's in a B1 zone and they have a drive-through if that's what you was referring to.
Well, but it states in the ordinance about it would be, require a conditional use permit. So wouldn't that carry over into this, that we're being asked to do that as well? To grant it, to make the tie-in to allow this in R4 and to basically allow conditional use permit, to allow drive-throughs that would be permissible in the B1?
They would be, but the specific request we received was just for the similar principal permitted use, to find it similar. Even though that is an outlier, we do feel that with the landscape buffer and screening that it meets the intent of the business park, which the comprehensive plan through the future land use map gives voice to. And in doing so, we think it can move forward because of that reason of the buffering and screening where it wouldn't have to have a conditional use permit per se, just as long as the use that permits the most traffic generation is screened and buffered. We went through that at length and thought it would be a satisfactory way to keep the neighborhood character intact and still allow a nice facility. You may remember too, that as part of the major subdivision that the planning commission approved, the structure does have to be finished on all four sides, mechanical units have to be screened. That was two of the conditions that was placed on that final plat and would still apply to this development as well.
The one question I have concerns the people who live off Pecan Court. And the screening really only covers, really screens Opacan Drive, but not Pecan Court, which I was wondering if the berm could continue around to that exit road, around that curve, continuing from here around to here to help to buffer from people who live in that particular area. Again, trying to screen, excuse me, the drive-through and trying to protect that, to keep people from, you know, looking straight into a drive-through.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think we're pretty open or flexible on landscaping. I mean, that's, it's their desire to, you know, having, you know, I don't think that's an issue at all, landscaping. And there's also some mature trees that are already there along that right-of-way between Pecan Court and Opacan Drive that will hopefully be salvaged. I don't know that without a doubt, but the intent would be, we would love to save those.
Sure.
There may be some really tall mature trees that stay and would be a great buffer as well.
Absolutely.
What is the zoning for the property to the east against Pecan Court?
R1.
It is R1? So we would abut basically a B1 property to an R1 property? If that's the, if you apply the logic you're trying to, and I follow it, but in effect, that's what we're doing.
Yes.
We're going B1 against R1.
Yes, and in the instances throughout the city where B1 or B3 or industrial zones does abut a residential zone, when those properties develop, they are required to do landscape. And so that would still apply in this case, which we've asked for.
I've got a question, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me. In the B1 zone, a financial institution with a drive-through is not principally permitted?
It is.
It is.
It requires a conditional use permit, is my reading of it.
That's why I was, I was just wanting to clarify that. I didn't know that. I wouldn't think that.
If a drive, for drive-throughs.
Okay.
I mean, it talks about a specific, you're an expert, I'm not. But in the, the B1 allows for personal inconvenience service, which I consider a financial institution of personal service, consumer service, but then when you get into the drive-through piece, it requires that conditional use. So I do have a problem with the daisy chaining is what we're kind of doing here.
But the, going to B1 does open up a realm of other possibilities too.
Yeah. Some of the history on this property too, there was a proposal for B1 at one time that never made it to the planning commission.
I remember a previous potential development.
Right. That could have opened up a lot more noxious uses on the property. So in order to keep it R4, to keep out the more noxious, potential noxious uses, we thought that this might be the best course of action for them to take.
Something to add too, that this facility is intended to be the corporate office for Signet, which has more of an office-type feel than your, than your high-intensity traffic in and out, drive-through sort of things. There is that aspect to it that, that we do feel like makes it a little different.
You're talking about the two-story?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are there other instances of a R4 for us making that jump over to, for drive-through facilities in R4s?
None that I'm aware of.
But there are some R4s that bump like B1s.
Yes.
That I can think of. But not that we've added conditional use to.
Right. And like I say, whenever a commercial piece of property does abut residential, we do require screening in that case.
But I agree with you that the screening may need to be on down.
I think it needs to go much further, yeah. Around to that road, definitely.
Something else to point out, you know, drive-through being kind of the key, one of the issues in the traffic that that generates. Currently, the subdivision is set up for a total of six lots. This facility would be taking up three. You will have two less businesses if this goes through to where you can probably make the argument that overall, there would be less traffic with that than if you have six separate offices. Just a thought.
I know I have heard complaints before from residences, residential owners about being able to hear the drive-through speakers, and those are being at restaurants. I just worry about this being potentially the same thing. And I don't know how the berming would affect that.
What are the office hours?
I was going to say, one difference might be the office hours.
Nine to five, Monday to Friday. And as he said, this will be our main operations, it'll be the core workers there. We have been in our office, we're in there now for four years, so it's time to move. We're ready to move and we need to move, so we do what we need to to help make this work.
Are you talking about your office on Lone Oak Road?
We have our main office on 16th and Clark Street across from the railroad.
Ah, that's right. I forgot about that.
We've been in that building for 40 years.
Yeah.
But as he said, this will be our accounting operations, just the main office for the car. And one other thing I might just point out is, as you know, I mean, the drive-through is there, but you're probably aware that that volume of traffic has gone down tremendously over the last few years because of the debit cards and the ATMs and other access. So I mean, it's, it's, I don't feel like it's as busy as everybody may think because it's just, people don't need it anymore. They still use it, but a lot of the transactions are done online through debit card itself.
I do have some color elevations from the architect that shows the scheme of what the building would look like on the outside. If you guys would like to see those as well.
Sure, would love to see.
I guess I would, you know, hopefully that shows some topography.
Exactly.
No, not really. No.
Because it sits kind of in the side of the hill.
That's where I'm kind of hoping for. And Josh, when we talked about the original development plan for this, I know there was discussion about it would not hook up to Opacan Drive. Was there a discussion about it potentially hooking up to Pecan Court?
We did talk about that.
Yeah, there, it was for exit, or exit, it was for lot three. I'm sorry?
Was it employee?
That was the original mention, was it might be used for employees, but I think anytime you put a road in, you can't say employees on.
Who can and who can't.
Right, exactly. I know that the building that the Colgans are building is kind of built into the side of that. It's very nice. Really does look pretty.
It is beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
I just think I need more information before I could make a decision on this because of the daisy chain effect that we're having to do.
Can you be specific about what you'd like them to provide?
The counsel from staff about the linking over to, we're going to R4 to potential B1 that requires a conditional use, making sure that's appropriate since there are no precedents in that of an R4 with a drive-through. And then also the site plan that could mitigate those potential nuisance, sounds, lights, and just to make sure that doesn't occur, since we're budding right up to R1. Does that seem appropriate?
It does, and as part of that, I would like to see, you know, some kind of elevation where we can see how the berm would help to mitigate that. Is there any way?
I think it's going to take care of it, but...
I think it would too, but I mean, if it came all the way around to that exit road onto Pecan Court, it should.
I can maybe describe that a little, I don't know if it will paint the picture that you want, but...
Sure.
The elevation of the, you know, the cul-de-sac is going to be the high side, and in this particular case, the lower side of that lot is going to have to be built up quite a bit because this particular building plans to be on, you know, the first floor will be on the same elevation. So it will be built up around that drive-through, and it may even be to where there's a small retaining wall needed as you come around that drive-through that will be built up quite a bit higher than Pecan Court and then it will wrap down into Pecan Court. So the elevation will be a lot higher with trees around that berm to where it would be blocked out pretty substantially.
Sure.
I just remember a comment that Rick, was it Rick Murphy? Was that, I mean, he just made a comment, I guess the problem...
You'll probably need to come up here so you can be on the mic.
Rick Murphy had made a point that the property adjoining the R1 that you're referring to is B1, I guess owned by Baptist.
This way.
We're coming down near...
Across Opacan.
Down here.
Is he talking about across Pecan Drive or?
Yeah, we're talking about across Pecan Court over here.
Right, so I guess there is three homes. We're talking about three homes.
Mm-hmm.
Right there, that's, I guess there's only three homes. And then on to the, would that be the?
East of that.
East of that is B1. And he just made a, he just made a comment that those homes will probably not be there in the next 10 to 15 years just because...
Quite a possibility.
The progression of...
Because of development, yes.
Well, and actually, I believe the comprehensive plan calls for that to be changed to...
Business park. Business park, yeah.
But I, you know, that's his comment, I guess, in the progression of a bank and,
you know, the tellers and R4 is, was that, and again, that doesn't mitigate right now, I guess. There's, there is those three homes right there, but anyway, that was just a comment he made that I thought was, that was pertinent.
Sure.
Joshua, you aware of any complaints from those residences at all?
I have not received anything from any residents.
One of the homes just sold, so it's just, people have just moved in and been working on it for the last, I'd say, last 90 days.
Okay.
So it's relatively new, but they know what they're getting into, that all the construction was there. Now, I don't know about the home to the right, as you're looking at it. The one to the left appears to be empty most of the time. I'm not sure what's going on there. And the only reason I know this is because I was interested in the property for a while. I didn't want to do what these people did in the 90 days or 60 days or whatever. It was a gut and redo, as far as I was concerned. I wasn't interested in doing that again. But if they did that, I can't imagine, they're planning on moving, but even if, you know, they fought a B1 and stayed, they knew what they got out the front door from day one. Because I was looking at the same thing. And I never did talk to the other person, but I have had...
Josh, did neighbors get letters on this?
Yeah, they did. Adjacent property owners.
It just so happens, my neighbor who bought the cancer building next to me, Alice Physical Therapy, he's, I've talked to him, he's, he's the person you're talking about.
Okay.
Who bought that house, and he's just happy it's not going to be a, you know, weekend business or...
Right.
We mentioned, he was concerned about, at one point Huck's had approached me and I talked to Josh about what's the possibility of rezoning and, or, you know, and he, he was just happy that, that I wasn't going the Huck's route, so.
Yeah, really.
But he, anyway, that's who that individual is, and I've talked to him, he's, you know, he's, he's pretty happy.
But they did receive, all of the residents would have received notice.
Yes, the adjacent property owners across.
You haven't heard any complaints about any of the construction or anything going on there. I mean, given Pecan Drive with everything, it's been through over the years. Pecan Court is relatively quiet.
Yeah.
In comparison to what other neighbors are dealing with, with driving on Pecan Drive is, that isn't what kept me from buying the property.
Right.
I do want that.
Yeah.
I think the main question at hand is, you know, the application is for similar principal permitted use in it. So the question is, does this bus, you know, does it fit in what's going on in the general area, somewhat of an office feel, you know, with a pediatric dentist office, potentially another endodontist going in next door? It kind of all feels very similar, which is, I mean, basically all we're asking for. It seems like a pretty similar use. It has an office feel.
What is the definition of a similar principal permitted use?
It is a use that they would have to find that's principally permitted in the R4, how it would be similar. As far as operations, land use, traffic flow, that's the thing. The application is for the bank to be found in a similar principal permitted use as a professional office, which as far as the internal workings of clients arriving, doing business, transactions, staying for an unspecified amount of time and leaving, that connection was pretty easy to make as far as, as far as that end. The main concern that staff had, as well as you do too, is the, the drive-through. But as far as the actual bulk of what's being asked, we thought the professional office would be similar, and that's what we recommended, along with some extra protections of the berm and buffering and things like that.
I think the notation that you all have made in your report, appropriate layout and screening of the drive-through lanes is critical to retain the character of the business park. I think that's...
And it is.
The key right there.
I don't think the drive-through will be any more noisier or a nuisance than people shutting their doors, getting in and out, talking. I think it's similar. And it's controlled as well. Those volumes can be controlled. It's not as much flow as she described as it has once been. Unpredictable.
I know a lot of banks that have five and six lanes too, and there are only, what, three here? Plus a drive-through, just basically a drive-out lane?
Drive-around.
Drive-around. The only comment I would have is that if we approve this particular item, I think it is crucial that the screening be provided.
Sure.
And I think that needs to be well-understood and well-documented.
All the way around. Going around.
The, the, the drive-through, all the way around to the road on the drive-through.
Do you like to see it extended further around than what we have on this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If needed, we don't know because of the topography, there's no topography...
Well, see, that's the thing.
Elevations on it, so we don't know. If it's needed, sure, but...
There's going to have to be some kind of, whether it's a berm or whether it's, depending upon, you know, like whether, like you said, a retaining wall or whether, you know, just what? what it is, something's gonna have to screen around to that road, just to protect those people who are living there now.
And again, I can only speak of that one.
We have no problem with that.
That's great.
So my one problem is still, is the connection over.
The view from that one home, when I first looked, that was before construction started, so it was still the old house that was sitting out there. And that was, while it was a nice one, it was not, it was not even in our decision-making. It was not. It was far enough away from the property and it was on the other side of the road. So any, any, this all looks like big improvements from my perspective. And thinking about someone owning that home, I remember the front view. It's a nice view coming out that front. So, yeah. Can't speak for the others, but I know that one.
Are there any other comments? Are you ready for the vote? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Noh.
Chair Crissius?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, Mr. Bradford.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Max Sterling and Lake Edwards and Wanda Smith for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 3450, 3470, and 3520 Starlight Drive. I further move that the requested waiver of the public hearing and the dedication of streets be given and approval of the submitted plat be granted.
Second.
Second by Wade.
This is a plat that's gonna have a future part to it. The, the lot that's being created behind the existing gas station will eventually be absorbed into that lot for a larger gas station in the future. The 4.1 acres in the back is gonna remain until we have a buyer that will subdivide off the property that they need at the time. And Mr. Tosh is here to answer any questions that you all may have.
I guess the first question I have, and it may not even be applicable, but this section that they're adding in, are they going to move the building back? Are they gonna add on the other side of the building with entrances on both sides?
The current plan is for the structure that's there now to be completely razed. There'll be a new building erected, and it will be slightly further off of, off of Wayne Sullivan Drive from what it is now. This new area here, Lot 10A, that's gonna be of gas pumps and underground gas tanks in that area. The new building is on the, will be on the existing lot that they own now. But they need the additional room to expand and have more maneuverability around the building for traffic.
I didn't know for sure if they were planning on adding like diesel pumps for trucks or...
Not that I know of.
This isn't big enough for that.
That hadn't been mentioned to me. I, I, I don't know.
Well, right, right now, their entranceway is just really close to the corner, so I'm envisioning that they're probably gonna move that entrance off of Side Street back a bit.
Probably so. I don't know that.
And this would allow that.
Definitely, yeah.
Because you end up having some congestion up against.
Well, like I said, everything's shifting back away from Wayne Sullivan somewhat.
They've actually got two entrances that come in, and they'll probably, like you said, move the one that's closest.
There'll be a site development plan that I've presented for that.
Sure.
And we will be following up with another waiver of subdivision plat consolidating this Lot 10A with the existing new lot. We'll be abolishing the 10-foot wide utility easement that you see there between the two lots now. We've done some investigative work on, there's no utilities within that. We'll just need to get the necessary signatures from the various utilities to sign off on it for the vacation of that easement.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Chair Crissius?
Aye.
Mr. Wade, you have the final item of business.
I move that this commission adopt a resolution forwarding a positive recommendation to the city commission to vacate a portion of an alley between 600 and 606 Broadway, 105 and 111 South Sixth Street, and 603 Kentucky Avenue.
Second.
Second by Morrison.
This request is to close 87.8 feet of the 300-foot alley that would terminate right behind the Urban Cobb, as it stands now. The reason being is a generator is proposed at 603 Kentucky Avenue. There's already an underground power line in place from an emergency generator. And Mr. Wood can answer any further questions that you all may have.
Where would the generator be located?
It'll be on the South Track, just south of the easement. Basically, the utilities are gonna just be running across the closed alley portion.
So it would be pretty much like right behind the attorney's office?
Yes.
Okay.
A little to the west property.
Yeah, that lot, or the address goes all the way through that lot, so I didn't think they would.
You're really only asking to close this one section, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I guess the question I would ask, I know that there's some, there's at least one doorway in the back of the Urban Cobb building. Will there still be access to that, not driving access, but access to get to that door?
Yes, nothing will be constructed to block any entrances.
Okay.
And that also is a handicap access for the attorney's office there.
Yes.
That's all been addressed, and they are currently, we're allowing an access easement to remain across those, or reciprocal one, so they can work together.
Okay, that's good.
So in effect though, Josh, this would just no longer be maintained by the city?
Right. And it'll be maintained by them, but we'll still have access through the entire alley.
Yes.
In other words, if there was a fire truck that needed to get in there.
It can get in there.
Backing it in.
Yes.
Okay. How are you gonna keep people from driving through there, I guess, would be my question.
That was the purpose of the ingress egress easement, is to make sure they didn't have that cutoff, so they could maintain access all the way to Clearance Gate, so you're not coming down partially and having to turn around on private property.
Right, yeah, that was my question though, but if somebody wants to get over here to this parking lot.
Right.
Are they still gonna?
They can still go through the alley.
Okay, all right. Well, that's the question I had.
I do regret to say, my originals are in Ohio, getting signed by the property owners, so I will have to come back and get your signature.
Come see me.
And I get it back.
Mm-hmm. Are there any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Benberry?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Chair Crissius?
Aye.
If there is no other business to come before us tonight, we stand adjourned.
I've asked Josh to research how.